Are you sorry?
Oh, I'm a pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I pledge. Pledge of allegiance. All stands clear? Thank you. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now we'll do the little calls.
Smith?
Here.
Patterson, here. Henderson, here.
Here.
Schumaker?
Here.
Flood?
Here.
Gilrocky?
Here.
Okay, so we have kind of two agendas, one planning commission and one DDA. So everybody go over the agendas and if there is motion to add, to read, or modify, please make a motion to accept as presented. Second?
Second.
Chris second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? So moved. Okay.
What's our coverage today, 7:45?
Yes. Yep. We get election of officers. So presently I'm chair, Chris' vice chair. Kristi, your secretary?
Yeah.
Okay.
For life?
Would it be appropriate to make a motion that all three retain their current positions or do you have to move individually?
Oh, they have to be done individually. But I have a question too, though. You've got treasurer on the DDA. Do you want to do that at the same time?
Yes, yeah.
So you can use the same members?
Yep.
And who's that?
Yeah, who would that be?
Who that?
Who that?
Who that? Aren't you that?
I'm that.
I don't know. I think we probably could do that, but just for the...
Break it down, fine.
Yeah. I think we should name everybody.
Okay, that's...
And we could vote out...
Mine was just a question, it wasn't a motion.
Okay, okay, okay.
Just a question.
Yeah. I think we should do it individually.
Some of those guys haven't said anything.
Yeah.
What do you want to start with? You want to start, yeah. Which position?
Top-down.
Do you like to start with?
It doesn't matter.
Top-down.
Sure. All right, chairman. So start with chairman. So was that all? Ben for chairman?
Move to him.
Yeah, nominate Ben for chairman.
I'll second.
Okay. Let's just kind of, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Vice chair?
I nominate Dave Konan for vice chair.
I don't know. I don't think he can serve.
I think he's in the council area. Oh, okay, that's right, that's right. Same vote on him, okay.
Chris' vice chair.
I would nominate Chris as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, so now we're down to secretary. You're here this time.
I'm mine, believe me.
We did such tremendous job.
I nominate Ms. Patterson as secretary.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Everybody's unanimous. Okay, congratulations, everybody, and thank you.
And then we do the DDA? Want to add the DDA meeting?
Yeah, the DDA meeting, yeah.
Later.
Okay. Okay, so now we're to approval of minutes from December 1st.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for December 1st.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Discussion? All? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Well, I'd like to say that our recording secretary does a marvelous job and it's the very rare case that there's ever a modification and I'd like to say thank you to that.
Yay.
You're here. Okay, so now we're to site plan application for 2310 East Main Street, Ross and Sam Delkey. So we all received a packet and a very well-prepared summary information page, pages, and what we sometimes call as letter of intent, and also some very nice drawings on the building. So let's say thank you and for such nice preparation. Now, it's not very often that we get things of this quality. Well, that's the end of the good stuff.
That's a good deal.
Just kidding.
I was feeling pretty good there for a second.
Okay, so how about you guys will kind of get some idea of we blow down or what you want to do.
Yeah, good evening and happy new year. Thanks for taking up the site plan and the letter of intent, I guess. That's, Sam and I are excited to be opening the business potentially in the village with your approval and we want to make it an asset to the village and we want to make it a site destination for both residents and visitors alike. We don't have a name for the business yet, which makes it kind of interesting because most of the time you give it a name and that implies what it's going to be. So we tried to describe it in the letter of intent and the word we used was an on-demand restaurant. First and foremost, this is a restaurant facility. It's the rest of the plans that go with what you have constructed as a restaurant, coded to a restaurant. It'll have restaurant facilities as a restaurant. And the restaurant, though, is different than what you see in town in that, one, we don't want to compete with our neighbors and, two, we want to provide a different type of a venue. And so we call it an on-demand restaurant, which is really aimed at themed or activity-based type dinners or meals. Doesn't have to be a dinner, it can be a lunch, a brunch, a breakfast, what have you. So what would go in someplace like that? Anniversary dinner, birthday party, a Super Bowl Sunday meal, a themed dinner where people dress up.
Oscar party.
Pardon?
Oscar party.
Oscar party. Could be any number of things. Could host a funeral dinner, but it's intended primarily for groups of people, not people that walk in immediately off the street. Now, the group can be up to what the capacity of the facility is. We would like to fill the building up on a fairly regular basis every day if we can. I mean, after all, it's intended to make money. But we realize that that's probably not practical or going to happen all the time. So we try to be a bit creative in that we have other potential C1 uses that we would like to pursue putting in the building if it's not available for some type of a meal, if somebody isn't coming in that day. What would some of those things be? Could be a professional office for a day where somebody comes in and presents seminars. It could be, it could host retail, nicer antique dealers coming in, for example, on a flea market Sunday, help walk around traffic, things like that. That is not the primary intent, but again, as a money-making endeavor, the intent is to have this place used. So we, so in the letter of intent, I put in something about performance guarantees. I thought maybe that covered the eventuality of doing something in there that was not restaurant-based for a day or two days. I don't know if that necessarily works or not. It seemed potentially that it did. At the end of the day, it's, we have a business plan that's been approved by a lending institution. We've got a loan waiting, we've got tradespeople ready to go. We're ready to go and hoping with your approval to be able to pursue this and open later spring. Questions, please?
I don't want. For your, like, office meetings or your potential fill-in type of use, would you be serving food?
If...
Donuts, coffee, something, snacks?
Sure. You're probably always going to find coffee and cookies available when it's not being used for some type of a...
Food would always be available.
A dinner function.
So we'll always have that food venue?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For primary use.
That's the real purpose of it. But again, I don't want to narrow my focus and not be able to do something with the facility when I don't have a group that is coming in, when I don't have a kid's birthday party, or I don't have a costume dinner, or I don't have a comedy club dinner, that type of thing. So this just gives me the flexibility to keep it occupied and if it's occupied, that means more walk-around traffic in time. Hopefully that answered that.
So your different venues, so some of the halls, some of the time, it would be, most of the time, it would be rented by others to host their event?
I don't know. I would think that at the beginning, maybe not. My intention is if there's not, if I don't have stuff booked right away, then I'm going to make a party and I'm going to see if I can get people to just to come in and buy a ticket or something.
Buy a ticket.
So maybe I'll have a feast of the month club and every second Wednesday or whatever it is, is the feast night and then I know that I have, I'm cooking for 30 people or whatever it is. And that is going to help people understand, you know, what we do and how we want to do things and that my food's good and, you know, all that, that it's fun and all that kind of stuff. So if there isn't something booked, then I intend to do that as much as, yeah, just to kind of get it going, sort of spark the idea.
Yeah, so it's kind of, going back to my question, though, so then you said if it isn't booked, so I'm looking at the booking. So that's, the booking would be to rent the facility with food?
Yeah, well, it's really to get a group of people in there to buy a dinner, which in effect pays the heat, the light.
Right, yeah.
So if that's considered a rent, so that's really the intention.
They do. Yeah, they'd have to make a reservation. You'd have to know ahead of time that they're coming in.
Yeah, we, again, we're trying to not compete with the papas or chaps by having individual people come in and sit down. Rather, we want to set it up as a group and the larger the group, the happier Sam is because she likes to cook. And, but it doesn't really pay to cook for two people. The cook pays, in this case, what we're presenting to fill the place up if possible. But if there's a group of 20 that want to have a dinner and it's profitable for us, we're certainly good.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
The, you know, the primary business concept, I really like the sound of it. I really liked your design and everything, but I'm a little fuzzy on what the secondary business concept is. You know, it almost looks like it's anything.
You're right. It's not anything. It's, but I appreciate what you're saying. The things that I put in the letter of intent are really those activities that are approved for C1. That would make sense in a facility that's not housing a bunch of people that are eating. So as Ben kind of alluded to, it is, it is space. I move the tables over, I move the chairs over, and we reconfigure the space for somebody that wants to, I don't begrudge it because I'll probably put them in there if it's possible, but somebody wants to sell insurance. He's got an insurance night, he does his own advertising, gets people...
Yeah, car means we wanted to set up a table in there on Sunday.
That's it below the box. But, but the point is that it would be only approved C1 activities. Again, the reason I put in the performance guarantee was because I would suspect that there may be concern about what I would put in for a period of time. The performance guarantee, I think, is as intended is to ensure that I'm not constructing something that's going to stay there forever or putting a use in there that's going to stay past a certain amount of time. So I would certainly not want to pay a performance guarantee, but if it was felt that that was needed to be able to host six weeks of every Sunday during the flea markets putting in antiques, I, you know, I would be willing, obviously, to do that. That's an assurance to planning commission and to council that that is not going to become the primary use over time.
And it was just a way to maintain some flexibility so that if there's a dry spell where the food is, then we have some other way of getting people in the door and also if, just to get people in to see what's going on.
Yeah, that was, that was the whole intent, is that provides us that flexibility. If there are not dinner parties or luncheons or Victorian teas that had been booked back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back, then I've got the ability to put something in there and pay for the heat and the light. And in fact, I think that adds kind of an interesting dynamic to it in that people will come around and want to see, okay, what's in it now. So primarily, the intent is...
It's all because I like to cook.
As the financier, chief financier, and dishwasher is to make it into a restaurant facility. And that's what it's designed and coded for. Good questions?
You know, the only thing I'm looking at with this is, and the secondary business concept seems vague to me, you know, as written.
Mm-hmm.
It's almost like anything you want for as long as you want it, you know? Because, you know, impermanent, that just means it's not permanent. It's not forever.
Right. But bounded by the performance guarantee.
Is that in here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got it.
I don't think there's anything applicable for a performance guarantee that could be construed later, but I did, if I may, I did talk to the planner, I did talk to Amy about this. So her consideration was the on-demand restaurant and the use of the building for the secondary uses basically constitutes a hall.
Yeah, so I asked that, that would be right. That's one of the two things I had, is it a hall or...
And the only place that is listed for a hall is not in C1 or C2, it's in community.
Yeah.
So that, and under that, it's, so, and that's basically nonprofits, but, so that's the only place we're at, but we're hoping you're not a nonprofit and you do make a profit.
Definitely a full profit.
But under that guise, it's a special approval land use.
We wrote that as halls for civic clubs and membership organizations.
Correct.
That's not a profit.
That's why we didn't...
Yeah. So, but Amy's suggestion is that we kind of review this stuff tonight, do the groundwork, and set a public hearing for a special approval land use. And through the special approval land use, then we could do, you could do your secondary things without a performance bond because now you have a hall where as long as it's okay to be, that venue is okay for the C1, you have the facility to do that without coming in all the time.
Right.
But if it's a hall, is it still a restaurant? Because we want this to be ours.
Well, if your, your primary thing, reading this, so yes, you could, and let's say that you get to the point where you're, you've grown from the hall and you're renting it out, and you're closed some days and open some days, and now your business has taken off so that you want to have it open all the time, you have employees and cooks and all that kind of stuff. Now you've transferred, so you can still be a hall. So you've transferred from the hall to the restaurant and your approval would still be fine.
Yeah, we think that anything that is agreed to under the special...
Sure.
Land use is then, that gives, I think, the flexibility we're talking about.
This is the way to get your flexibility.
Yeah.
Ben?
Isn't a lot of what they're asking to do really just what they do at the Lions Hall across the street?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. So you mean, you rent a hall, the Lions don't cook for you, but they do have, you know, the wild game dinners and other things like that where public is invited. Usually, they're just for themselves.
But they have showers, they have group services.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
They're called like a fish fry night, if you like.
But they also...
All the pancake, their pancake breakfasts.
Yeah. Right.
So we could do all that stuff too if we wanted to?
Yeah.
What I'd also like to do is that I want to be able to do like a daily special menu where I just have one thing I cook that day and when it's done, it's done.
Isn't that putting yourself right in competition with the people you said you were going in competition with? If you're having a daily special?
I don't know.
But she wouldn't have a menu, she'd have one thing.
Yeah, but it's still a little bit like a restaurant. Our restaurants are packed. I really think that, you know...
Which is covered on the C1.
Yeah.
But I don't want, I don't want any kind of hall designation to restrict me from doing that. If there's a, some kind of a seasonal whatever I want to do for lunch and I'm going to say, I got 20 of them, come on in.
I think you're fine.
Do that.
I think this is the venue that is going to encapsulate everything that you want.
Now, what would you like to see from us that further identifies or specifies, maybe bounds, the types of things that we're thinking about?
How much should we delineate as far as what can go on there and for what period of time we don't even have to worry about?
I don't think we have to have a timeframe.
So we don't have to worry about that. Under a hall, under a hall.
Correct.
Yeah. Now, does the Lions have any kind of liquor license?
Um...
Or is it just, you can bring liquor in?
I really don't know. I don't think, I don't know.
Not according to the...
They don't have a bar license there.
No, because they can't serve, if you come in, they can't serve you.
Yeah, but you can bring alcohol into, into it.
Right.
Like the AdVets had, like, you could go and buy a drink at the AdVets, they have a license.
Yeah.
Right, they do.
You don't do that at the Lions.
What it reminds me a little bit is Cranks, you know, Cranks at 21 and 80 or something? Yeah. You know, they got all these little halls, but they don't have a beer, wine license or any kind of liquor license, but you can, you know, just like at wedding reception, you can bring all the alcohol in and then they can wait on you, they can give you a bartender, they can give you waitresses, but...
You have to bring it all in.
Yeah, they bring it in, yeah, yeah.
As long as you, as long as your guests, as long as whoever's giving the party is providing it free to their guests.
Right. And that's what Cranks is. Cranks does it that way too, you know? They bring in their half-barrels or they bring in their whiskey or whatever they want.
Right.
Then you pay for a bartender or whatever.
Yeah, you have a service fee.
And they serve you, yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
So going over your letter of intent, so I don't want to do it this evening and make a lot of lengthy stuff, but I'd kind of like to get with you and maybe go over some of the things that are in here that are inconsistencies with the ordinance that I'd like to alleviate so that we can resubmit this in a kind of, how about condensed form?
Eight days is too much for us.
And actually...
Only eight months?
Might have something better to do than...
That is condensed. I have another question. If we were to do, what about takeout food? Can I, will I, if I have a hall, can I do that? Or, I know I can get a license from the health department that says I can serve food in my building and I also have a different kind of license that says I can cook my food in my building and then take it someplace else. So if I get that enhanced license that allows me to take it someplace else, there's no issue with you on any of that?
So now you're talking about a catering business?
If, if I have a prime, if I have a restaurant, then I can, as a secondary, I can have a catering, right?
Is that what it says? Or is it a carryout? Are you talking about carryout?
It could be, it could be both, either or.
So I, that's a question I can't answer, but it would be something for the planner, but my gut feeling is all this could, again, could be put into your special approval land use.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And again, I just wanted to check this and see what they would call it by the business regulations. If it's called a bankroom, you can do that.
Yeah.
So it sounds like it fits that.
Yeah, so the hall really is a designation.
Yeah, it was one of the designations, the state of Michigan.
Because I was trying to look up the...
Bankroom hall, whatever.
That's a hall with food services.
It's all good. At the, at the end of the day, paying a lot of money, wouldn't be a lot of money to build something that's really, to function as a restaurant, but again, if we have flexibility for the times where it's not packed with people, which is what my preference would be, I'm happy to comply. Makes sense to me.
Sounds like a route anyway, except there...
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
And you're, it's an unusual use of the building, but it's kind of a neat concept. So I actually heard there's a, a business in Ferndale that has a similar type concept.
Hello?
I don't know what the name of it is or where it is, but that's what I was told.
I hadn't heard of a grocery store, hardware store either until recently, so...
Well, there's one in Elmo.
Yeah. I hear it.
We haven't watched.
I think there's one in St. Clair.
Okay.
Wow.
Okay, we can do that.
I think the general stores of old, that's exactly what they were, loggers, poppeters and everything else.
Yeah. At the end of the day, we want to work with you guys to make this a really neat, interesting place for the village.
Kind of always different, kind of always interesting. If you want, if you wanted somebody to cook some, your grandma's favorite, whatever, whatever on her birthday, even though she's been gone for a long time, that's the place.
I'm used to make bread, pancakes, that's what I want.
Want to talk to us about a dinner, we'll be all set.
Yeah.
Green light. So...
All right, so what do we do?
Inconsiderate area, any major that you came up with?
Well, I highlighted quite a lot of stuff. Most of the stuff we kind of went over with the, with the hall designation. So getting rid of the on-demand restaurant and calling it a hall solved a lot of those things. So part of it, my changes kind of came in on page, page five. Something is the use of the sidewalk. We did a study way back when on sidewalk usage and the main section of the sidewalk is about five or six foot. So that has to be kept clear at all times. So if you look at the main street, there's a little piece that's kind of by the parking area, a little piece by the building, that main section of concrete is what we want, kept clear at all times. There was something about an I, awning sign, and it's...
That's nothing...
Not an awning sign, let me take that back, about an awning. So the awning can't be vinyl or plastic, it has to be some non-combustible thing.
Right.
And then it can only, I think it can only protrude 50% of the sidewalk. And here it says 75%, but it's 50%. So just some clarifications that I talked to you earlier about that when we redo this, I'd like to have it so that we're matching and we're not kind of...
Yeah.
And you had something about a, I'm going to call it a sandwich board sign, so that's your temporary sign that goes out outside. so that's your temporary sign that goes out outside. It says in here that you're gonna generally remove at sundown. No, it says must remove at sundown and it's a ninety-day permit. So you don't have to come to planning, you just get a ninety-day permit from the village building inspector. But it's two-foot square at the base and thirty-six inches high and it can only be out during daylight hours.
Okay.
Okay.
So in that, then there was something about signage outside the building. That is only ten percent of the fascia. So you have two street-side fascias, so you can have ten percent here and ten percent here, but it can't exceed ten percent. So whatever that is, and in here I think it says fifteen percent. So it's ten percent and it said something about windows. The window stuff is basically temporary. So you can put a sign in the window, you know, say it's open or something and that's okay. But like you're gonna have your special, so okay, today is gonna be bread pancake day. So, you know, you're gonna advertise that thing. Or, you know, this is gonna be spaghetti month, or this is gonna be ravioli week, or, you know, this is gonna be crate weekend. You know, those are the kinda things that would go in your windows and then just last for a certain amount of time and then you take them down and put something else up.
No, I understand.
So that's the, that's kinda the window signage.
Yeah, we were thinking of, cause again, the building's gonna be taken back to an eighteen nineties look and have the gold leaf stuff in the window. In some cases they would have it, but it would be within the guise of the regulations.
Sounds good.
So then there was something about lighting. So the lighting you had for your back entrance was a maximum of two hundred and fifty watt. Since you're on the corner and you're basically on three sides corners, you know, so you're, because of the alley. So since you're open that way to traffic coming from, to the north, so that, any, any type of lighting that you have, any external lighting that you have cannot extend past the building or the sidewalk. So the lighting has to be shielded such that you can't see the lighting driving by or driving up to it.
Yeah, it can't reflect in your eyes, yeah.
Correct.
Right.
So it's gotta be shielded and I have two hundred and fifty watt wall packs on my building. That's an awful bright, that's an awful bright.
I would never put that much in there.
But it's listed, so we have to make-
Well, yeah, not more than, I was just trying to follow what the book says. But in this case, it's a single layout that would be over the back access doors that's in the alleyway, not on the corner, but I understand what you're saying.
But it's gonna be right above those two doors?
Be right above the two doors, to have light there just like everybody else down the alley. But if Ben's right, there is some access to the roadway and wanna make sure people don't get, you know, spot glare from something.
That's an icky corner.
And then a couple, just a couple of other lamps over entrance doors. I do have apartments upstairs, there's no lights on any of those doors. And so for safety purposes, I wanna put something, but it would be well within the allowable wide.
Yeah, so the big thing is that you're trying to pick your fixtures. So we would just kinda put it in our approvals, that this would have to be done. So then, actually, if it's okay with everybody else, we just leave it up to Dennis to approve your fixtures.
Yeah, our own type fixtures.
You know, cause I'm sure that you're gonna find one and say, I like this one and then ten fixtures later, you're gonna come back to the first one.
That's, yeah.
Usually what I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No, we're fine with that.
So then the other thing is in the drawing, and actually in this, you say that you have an agreement with the village and that's what I was doing is going over the agreement with the village. But most of the agreement with the village pertains to construction. So there's very little that pertains to extended usage. So, but in the extended usage is your handicap ramp or-
Right, ADA compliant.
Thanks. So your drawing states that you're gonna have a concrete ramp with footings and all, but in the village's agreement, it's supposed to be a removable wood thing. So you don't need to hire your architect to redo this. So we're just kinda cross this out, say, we're gonna delete this, we're gonna put a wood ramp in it and then we'll do this on enough drawings that when we sign stuff and finalize everything, that everybody's got a signed dated copy.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Of you and Sam.
Yeah, the intent, and we should change it, and we changed the dimensions on the ramp to be ADA compliant. We forgot to change the composition of the ramp. To put that in, you have to take out the existing sidewalk, dig a footer, pour concrete. But per the council, they want it to be removable to grant approval to put it on that part of the sidewalk that's not the five-foot right-of-way. And so we wanna make it something that I can easily get out of there. For whatever reason, the building changes hands. So it would be wood and we would be most happy to change the drawings. The rise there is the ADA rise and the distance. So it'll be built to what it's indicated there, just a different construction material, wood, not concrete.
It's only a couple feet or foot and a half or something?
It's about, I wanna say seventeen inches off the ground and then, so it's a sixteen or seventeen-foot rampway to get to a platform, which is then at the seventeen inches, which is where the door entry is.
So it's like two-step, is that a two-step right now?
It's not a two-step, it's whatever is there is a one, is a one-step. Beyond, I think, eighteen feet, you have to have a tier. Go up and then you stop, a tier and then you go up again.
You're just trying to gauge the height though.
Yeah, yeah.
At the end we're talking about is basically two steps, thereabouts. You could normally, eight and a half inches is a normal ADA step.
I see what you're saying.
I'm just trying to see how much rise we're even talking about here.
Eight, it's eight and a half is standard. The ADA has a whole table, you can do any rise run you want, combinations. It's actually, there's a formula that you have to be for rise and run.
It's an inch per-
Yeah, you get an inch.
It's twelve inches of ramp for every inch of rise.
Okay.
So I think we're seventeen or sixteen.
Yep, that makes sense.
And how about the thing where the air conditioner is, that's been approved by council?
There was, there used to be a garbage disposal fenced-in containment area. I took it out, but left some of the footings in because it was falling apart.
Is that where all those meters are?
The meters were not hidden by that. Rather, it was, it was right at the back of the building. And so one of the, one of the folks on council did say they wanted me to bring in the drawings and let the dentist and the engineer check them out because as the zoning ordinance indicates, you have to have it set back so far from the public right-of-way so that you have access. So you saw my little blurb going there about stop signs and all that. It just, that's an interesting T intersection there through the alleyway and so we would wanna set that away from the back end of the building. So I would have to-
That's a dangerous corner.
Yeah, I would, I would have to, not put it where, a couple of the original footings were, rather I would have to move it back a little bit, but with your approval. And I would hide the meters as part of that.
Ben, all that stuff about the parking and the road and all that, that's nothing to do with us, right?
No, it's not. The other thing I could, would like to say is you had a suggestion about not having any parking in front of the building immediately to your south. But when they're working inside that building, they're gonna take up, they need all that space cause they actually park generators and power that and without that, we don't have any phone. So you can't take that parking away, no matter what, I think. And then if we get back to the air conditioning thing, since you are, that is actually in the right-of-way and actually in the sidewalk, rather than having a space between that, if it's not necessary to have a space towards the street, I'd like to minimize that as much as possible to leave as much sidewalk as possible.
Absolutely.
So, you know.
Yeah, as you know, it's a double wide there. The reason we, what makes it convenient is to take that inner chunk is simply that there are window wells that exist there that were not taken out when the original, when the new sidewalk was poured, they were simply filled in and all that packed material was falling down and frankly, there was no real supporting structure by the building. So it was all starting to come in the building. So I approached council to get permission to put the window wells back in service, which they granted. I have fencing to go around now, I just gotta wait for a warmer weather. But that would be within the footprint of those window well footings.
Okay.
So would not-
We're gonna put fencing around the window wells?
Yeah, that's for Dennis. Some people got, there's a couple facilities that have grading down on it, but nothing else. Dennis said he wanted, he wanted fencing.
Cause there's a curb.
There's a, there's a, like a three-inch or four-inch raised concrete abutment around those, which existed even with the fill.
So if you put the grade on, you still have, you still trip over the curb.
Yeah.
That's why you saw the fence.
So this really, it improves it, it allows me to put the windows back in service and get light down in the basement and air. And so I think it works for everybody. But I can bring pictures if you'd like.
Well, that's okay.
So is that us, is that, this all mostly fall on Dennis?
Well, it's mostly fall on Dennis, but since, you know, this is kind of a reconstruction, so I do believe that it would fall under us somewhat, you know, just to make sure that everything, because you're, you're, not only is it a building thing, but it's also on village property, so it's not, it's not on their property. So other than that, any other questions or?
Just get North Avenue out of there.
You live on that street, you know.
Yeah, we should, yeah.
And I'm happy to come and talk to you whenever you're available.
That guy's inside, we'll be in a lot now, pretty soon it'll, it'll be open, we'll be working and come in and see.
Okay, so we need to, so are you fine with the special approval land use? So if so, then we're, so that is a, there's a thousand dollar fee for the special approval land use. And if that's okay, we'll go ahead and set a hearing, or set a hearing date. But kinda before we set a hearing date, Paul, you're not gonna be here at the next meeting, correct?
No, nor the meeting.
Nor I, so I suggest that we-
I'm not sure that I am either.
Well, you being the liaison, if you were here, you couldn't vote if you were gonna vote on council or if you were here and you voted here, you couldn't vote on council. So really, you know.
If council votes on something, I usually don't vote on it here, I voted on it, but it's council.
Correct, so that means I would nullify your vote here if you reversed your situation. But I just assumed that we had more before board, so I'd like to set this, the second week in February. When are you gonna be back?
Oh, sometime after the first of March.
Okay, so you're gonna be gone all February.
Yeah.
But I'll be back the second week, so then it will at least have five members. And then you can vote however you want.
I'll be back too, I'm gonna be back in Australia the week before.
The second week?
The first week.
The first week, so you're gonna be gone?
Yeah.
So no, so no matter what, yeah.
The second week, we'd have a village meeting.
We don't have to have it on Monday, Sunday's actually a holiday, it could be one, yeah.
I'd have to check the schedule. I'm sure one of them days.
So you're talking a week if I'm going, right?
Okay, so we definitely, did everybody hear that? Wednesday night's the only day that, or only night Becky's available and I don't wanna have this meeting without her.
Well, that's-
So that's-
You could do it before the council. Before there's a public hearing?
Eighteen days.
Eighteen days? So eighteen days?
Yeah, I think it's-
Actually, it's not more than fifteen and not less than five.
So what's that then?
Anytime in between then, but I have plenty of time.
That's not more than fifteen then, what day is that?
Twenty-sixth of January. I have plenty of time to put the notices up.
So February eleventh?
The eleventh, I like that date.
That would be okay with me. So that's Wednesday, the second Wednesday of the month?
Yeah, that works for me.
Christie?
I'm not sure, I'll have to check and call Becky.
Okay. Paul, you're gone, Chris, I'll be back. Good, okay, I'm good.
She'll be back in a minute.
Okay, good.
Okay, yeah, we gotta make a motion to set the public hearing.
Okay, motion to set public hearings, a special approval, a public hearing for-
For special approval and use.
For special approval land use or-
What are you guys calling yourself?
Ross and Sam.
Ross and Sam Belkey.
For Wednesday, February the eleventh.
Second?
At seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five?
For the public hearing.
Yeah, for the public hearing. So we're gonna have two then, meeting.
Okay. Oh, that second advice, whoever does come back, Christie or second?
Yeah, he was gonna be here today, tonight, but they weren't, they never gave us their letter of intent.
Alright, second one by Christie.
Christie did, I think.
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, we're done?
Thank you.
Hey Ross? Give me a phone number.
Two four eight.
That's what you have to say, it's on camera.
You can get ironed out?
Yeah, oh yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it.
That'll be interesting.
It'll be fun, it's what it'll be. It's gonna be a blast. And I get to cook.
Yeah.
Boy, and I can't wait.
I know, we get to eat.
Okay, thanks. Okay, all right, so I'll be in touch.
Okay.
Alright, we have to go because he's sick.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
See you, Ross.
Ben?
Okay.
Ben? Do you guys need to make a motion to reschedule your regular meeting date?
What now?
You need to make a motion?
Yeah, we'll do that. Okay, so, yeah. Okay, so now, we have, we initially had a public hearing set for this evening for the Ezo property at seven four one three zero. But Fulton, so, but they were supposed to give us a letter of intent, that never happened. So we're waiting for that letter, so we have to set a new public hearing and that I suggest we also do on the eleventh.
If we get supporting paperwork.
If we get the supporting paperwork. So right now, we'll set the public hearing for the eleventh and hopefully the paperwork comes. To support that meeting.
Alright, so.
So-
Motion to set a public hearing for special approval land use for the sign.
Display mix.
Make sign?
Display mix.
Oh, display mix, there you go, yep, display mix. For February the eleventh at seven forty-five two.
So we wanna have both at the same time?
Are they concurrent, is that what you-
I say, I open one and then one, you just open one up or you have to close one and then into the other?
I don't know.
I don't think we ever done people before.
We have.
Well, then set it for seven fifty because you can always open a public hearing late if you can't open it early. So even if Belkey's takes ten minutes, you can still open Ezo's late.
Alright, okay, so let's, yeah, okay.
So motion for a public hearing for special approval land use for display mix for February the eleventh at seven fifty P M.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Long favor?
Aye.
Close, don't move. Okay. Okay, so now we need to set a new meeting date. So we're going to not have the meeting on. Oh, here it is. I got it. So instead of February second, it's now gonna be on February eleventh. So a motion to approve the new date. So moved. Second? Christie, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
You got everything moved?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so a synopsis for two thousand and fourteen. Everybody have a chance to go over that? Prepared by our capable reporting secretary?
You want a motion to accept that report or what?
Yeah, has, has, does everybody in turn with the review?
Yeah, we went through, I think we went through this last meeting.
Yes, okay, there we did.
I moved to accept the two, two thousand and fourteen review. I made a planning commission, two fourteen and review.
As for that. Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Don't move. Okay, now we have the, what we'd like to do. So our agenda for two thousand and fifteen. So basically, this was what we discussed at the last meeting also.
Right. Question on administrative review. What is the procedure for changing that? That has to go to council?
No, the, everything in the ordinance is gonna require a public hearing. So I don't wanna do, my idea wasn't to just piecemeal it, do this individually, but to do it all as a whole. And then, I don't know the zoning ordinance. I know the master plan, we adopt the master plan and it's final. But with the zoning ordinance, I'm not sure if it goes to council first. So we would approve it and then they approve it. I think that's the case. So I, I think that, you know, our approval is basically secondary. So they're the ones that actually put it into.
Okay, okay, the change.
Yeah. Yeah. So when I did, I know this isn't part of this, but it kind of is. I did talk to Amy. She's supposed to get back to me the middle of the month as far as they talk it. Yeah, well, it's, it don't matter. So, okay, anybody wanna add anything to this? Anybody? The only thing I'd like to do with this is, I'd like to have, give everybody homework of reading the zoning ordinance from front to rear. So that when we look at something, we're not, we've got a basic knowledge of what we're doing. But also, if we do this front to rear, you can get kind of an idea of where the discrepancies are. Because seems to be, we're finding discrepancies. So maybe if we all read it, and then I would just, what I'd really like to do is maybe go through, you know, two or three sections a month. If we need to talk about it at the, the next meeting, we do so. If we don't wanna talk about it, we won't. So if anybody's got questions, but what do you think with that? What do you think about that idea? So I don't know, how many sections are there?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So I'd like to do it in this year, so that's twelve, so three sections of a meeting, three sections a month. Sound doable, everybody?
Except if you have a meeting like we do today.
Well, you'll still have, you'll still have the thing where you're gonna, you're supposed to read the three sections per month. You know, and if there isn't any, you know, if there, if there aren't any questions, then.
That's true. I'm just saying, I don't want, if I've already got an hour and a half into this meeting, I don't wanna spend another hour and a half here.
Understood.
Discussing this. That's just me.
Well.
You guys may love, you may love that idea.
But, you know, and yet, so it's kind of what Dave is saying is true. But then maybe sometimes when we don't have very much on our agenda, we could do some catch.
Right, that would be a good time.
You know, so.
Like you got two, next meeting, you got two.
Oh, yeah, next meeting's gonna be huge.
Yeah, so that probably would not be a good.
No, but if, if everybody read it and then kind of like had pan paper that they kept notes. My thing is, I likes a paperclip. So you put a paperclip on the page, highlight the section, and then just write on your, your little cheat sheet, you know, where you're at and, you know, how many things that you've got that you wanna discuss and, you know. And then if we do it the next month, then great. And if it goes a month or so later, as Dave says, because we're, we're busy, that you still have what we're doing and you're not trying to just remember. So I'd like to add that to our agenda. So kind of the audience while we're doing this, we're looking at redoing some inconsistencies and some updates to the zoning ordinance. So there's something to do with the sign ordinance, the administrative review, package liquor thing, special approval land use, cell towers, fences, and some discrepancies in the charts. So that's kind of what we're talking about. So and all these are things that we'd like to do to change the ordinance. And the ordinance was adopted, was done in two thousand and two, but really made effect is January first of two thousand and two. So it's basically thirteen years since this has been done.
I think the, that's part two of the L S G, as I was saying, chapter twenty-six is how you establish an amended ordinance.
Oh, is that right? The last one?
Yeah, so maybe we'll read that one first.
Start at the back.
Yeah, yeah, start, start at the back. Okay, so anything else to add to our agenda for two thousand and fifteen?
You said two to three, you wanna do three per meeting.
Three.
Three, yeah. And we'll start with twenty-six. So if there's no further discussion, a motion to approve as amended?
Yeah, make a motion to approve the two thousand and fifteen agenda as amended.
Second? Um, discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? Don't move. Okay. Public comment?
How you doing? Michael, we're here now.
Yeah.
If you know you're everybody.
Yeah, and we know why you're here.
You know why we're here. I just wanted to stand this update, see what's going on with the zoning and ordinance issues. See if there's any new news, if there's anything more that I can do to speed it up. Anything on my end that I can do.
Well, basically, you've heard just what we're, what we're doing and what we're planning. It really had, you know, from the beginning, I pretty much told you what the, what, what the scope of things were gonna be. And if you were listening to tonight, then we're proceeding with, with what we're doing. So the, to kind of give you a little bit more of an update, the, as I said earlier, the planner's gonna come back sometime this month with a cost estimate. So our, I checked, we have no money in this year's budget. So next year's budget, two thousand and fifteen, starts sometime in April?
April first.
April first. So until April first, we can't spend any money. So once the planner gives me a, a, a cost estimate, then we'll go to council to get an approval for that expenditure. So we're, we're moving on what we're doing, but as far as anything you can do, there's really nothing you can do. There's nothing that we can do either, other than just what we're doing.
Wait, would it, would it, would I, can I pay a fee or pay something just to change mine, you know, on the zoning part?
I, I don't know, that's. I don't know if that's even a legal thing to do.
Michael, is it?
Yes.
Why? If we didn't have this thousand foot, that's, that's the main restriction, right? We didn't have this thousand foot. That disappeared today. How quick could you get this through the state to get a license?
Really quick.
Any day, any day, I know.
Really quick.
There's no delay on.
Within a week.
On getting a liquor, this beer wine license?
Beer wine, I'm just going for beer wine.
Beer wine license.
Yeah.
So we're really your only.
I got people coming in every day and there is gonna be, they walking in, walking out, every day people.
I know you like to do everything at one time.
I know.
But I, I hate to just see things delayed by months. I don't, I mean, I don't know why, what, what Abby's telling you or what your thinking is here.
Well, I've been pretty straightforward in what my thinking was.
I know, but, but you haven't been, you haven't been able to put any kind of timeline on it.
How can you put a timeline, Dave? I don't have a dollar figure and council hasn't approved any expenditure.
Well, you're looking at an expenditure to update the ordinance, both ordinance, is that correct? But you, you haven't asked the council to look at this separately.
Your job. You're the liaison.
And I am, but there's no use me saying something that this group is not going to approve.
Okay.
If they're bad there, you know, you know what I'm saying?
If you wanna put that forward, then put it forward.
I mean, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding correctly. One is removing the thousand foot restriction.
I, I, and I don't know if, what the procedure is, if council can amend the zoning ordinance. I don't even know if that's legal.
Becky?
Well, it's cool. You have to roll through the process twice.
With that?
You can go through the whole, that whole chap, article twenty-six, which is you can, these changes can come from the planning or the village. But it ultimately has to be put through the P C, reported on, and then recommended back to council.
Okay, so.
But ultimately, so it's effectively, you have to go through the whole cycle twice. Whether, just for this one on its own, plus everything else, when, whenever everything else is.
I'm being asked, my concern is that I like to keep those buildings full rather than empty. I think it looks horrible, having empty buildings. We committed a lot of money when we formed the D D A to help develop our, our community. I'm a member of the McComb planners, which is a group in McComb County. Of villages, townships, cities. Most of them participate. I made a township, doesn't. But it's where they try to help businesses come into their community. One of the, one of the things they've identified is the hurdles that businesses have to go through to get open. They're committed to trying to help, you know, lower that amount of time. But we don't need outside help here. But I don't want, I'm willing to do what it takes with the council, but I gotta know what this body wants to do. Right now, I'm the only one that wants to, that I've heard.
You're the only, no, I, I take exception to that because everybody on this board wants to do this. So I take extreme exception to what you just said. You're not the only one.
And I'm glad you are.
So everybody on this board wants to see this done.
Okay, and I like that. I'm glad.
We, we've never said we didn't wanna do it. We've all said that we wanted to do this.
But we haven't attached any urgency to it on all that I can see. You, you. I know I don't, I don't understand everything here.
Okay, so you're on council. What didn't you understand about not having any money in the budget, not complaining, not being able to have any first strings?
We pay for it.
How?
We pay for it.
No, no, sorry.
So here, okay, so in answer to your question, and so let me. Excuse me, just let me finish. So I'm gonna run something by the board and if you guys like this, we can authorize Dave as council liaison to present this to council. Okay? So what Dave's asking is an immediate expenditure from, approved by council for the planning commission, something not in this year's budget, not in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen budget. So it's not, it's money we do not have currently. So first, you ask for money. Second, then you ask if, and tell council what you wanna do with this, that we're gonna, we've adopted our, our agenda and this is, it take an exception to the extended, to do something on a sole basis. So we're gonna do all this work again, not for this single item, but everything that we're gonna do to adopt the ordinance. And run, if you want me to, I'll come to that meeting to help you out. But every, all the approvals that you're asking isn't from the planning commission, has to come to council first.
Let me ask you, Becky, 'cause I don't understand. First of all, if it's just removing the thousand feet from the ordinance.
It's a public, it's still a public hearing?
Okay, we have a public hearing.
And, and you still have to rewrite the ordinance and.
Well, the rewriting of the ordinance as far as printing, that would be something, we've made changes and then printed it later.
Exactly, and I, and I'm not talking about rewriting, not, not codifying, having a, a new ordinance printed.
Was it gonna cost, how long, how much does it cost to have Becky look, or Amy look at this?
I, I don't know. I, I, I don't, I haven't got any numbers for the whole thing. Now I can ask her, I can call tomorrow, she'll be in tomorrow, I think, and ask her to separate that cost fee out. Hopefully, I can get something so that we could either present it at the next meeting or the following meeting this month. Okay, so now that's, that's a little bit of kind of this and that. What does this board think of that idea?
Well, you have to, it'd have to go from council back to us?
Well, no, all you're really doing is asking council to approve money. Dave has this in his head that he has to get this done now. There is no money now. There is any money, period, ever, until council approves it and the.
I don't know what, I don't even know what money you want.
Neither do I, but there isn't any money, period, so there isn't, sitting on council, you have the first strings and you have an attorney sitting at your, every other meeting. So council gets to do things that planning couldn't even dream of. So.
True, so we don't, we don't have to ask for them, I mean, they can, he can, as a lady.
Council, I have to approve.
Council, yes.
Council, I have to approve. Okay, now you've talked, you've been talking to Amy, that's free, I take it, or you paid her on it? We've already paid her a retainer.
Oh, no, no, every time I talk to her costs.
Okay.
Costs a hundred bucks an hour.
Okay, and you've done that?
No, I haven't.
Where did you, you just told, you just told what you called her up?
I told you that I talked to her and asked her to give me a.
But there was no.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. This is a meeting and if you wanna talk, then keep it quiet or go outside.
I was talking to him.
I understand that.
I said, that's the third time he said money and changed the things, he never gave me the figure. That's it, for a month we've been here, we never got the figure, how, how are they gonna change the zone, how are we gonna? He keeps saying next month, next month. I don't understand. And he said thousand feet. And he said thousand feet.
I'm sorry, sir, we're in the discussion, and this isn't, this isn't part of our discussion. So, we're trying to do something for you, please let us do it. So, you can amend your budget at any time.
Yes.
We cannot. We can't, we don't have a budget, we don't have the first rates.
First of all, the planning commission has come to us in the past for money that hadn't necessarily been approved. Maybe someone to go to a seminar or something like that, and we've approved those kind of things. And I'm not being critical, 'cause we're glad to do that. But it's not like we've never done this.
That's incorrect, because for most of the years I've been chair, I've had or requested training be in my budget. Sometimes it was in the budget, but it was always in the request. So, again, this is something that isn't in the budget, hasn't been requested in the budget. So, if you want to do this, then it's on you as liaison, and it's on the planning commission to authorize Dave and I, and if you want, anybody else that wants to come to the meeting to do so.
How can we authorize an unknown figure? We don't even know the figure.
We're not authorizing, you're not authorizing a figure. You're authorizing Dave to request from council to allow us to split this and do this in two segments, and approving a expenditure in addition, so a double expenditure.
Okay, yeah, 'cause we're gonna have to go back with the other stuff. I think we should do it, I think, I don't think we need, I don't think they can just sit and spend for a long period of time without a beer and wine license. You know, I just don't see how you can do that. So, I think there's a sense of urgency. This is kind of an exception, you know, part of it was on them. You know, they jumped in, they did all this renovation, they opened their store, and they didn't have a beer and wine license.
Full well knowing that it was gonna take a long time to do. I mean, even before that you got your approval, you were told by this board that it was gonna take a year to get this.
But that being the case, I'm not saying that it's this council's fault that this happened. But it is what it is now, and I think if there's no sense of urgency, they're gonna have a hard time staying in business until like May or June without beer and wine license. I mean, the store is set up for beer and wine, that's what it's set up.
Well, May or June, even with this expediency, it's gonna be May or June.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
Oh, is that, it take that long?
Okay, so first we have to go to them, and get an approval. Then after the approval, then we have to write the ordinance. Then we have to have a special meeting, a public hearing, and then we have to adopt it, then it has to go back to council. None of this is fast.
Yeah.
So, if, okay, so, okay, so wait a minute, let me just give a timeline here. So, let's say we do it this month for council, and the council approves. So, we're not gonna do anything at the next meeting. It's already too long. So, but maybe through that meeting, if they could rewrite that ordinance for our March meeting. So, then we'd look at the March meeting and say if that's okay. Then we set the public hearing for April. Then after the public hearing, maybe we ratify it, then it goes back to council. So, at April or May, and that's if everything happens, slam, bam, thank you, ma'am.
But if we didn't try to expedite it, we're talking, we're talking that year you were...
We're talking, I mean, I was, I mean, I was being totally honest with that year. I mean, 'cause I knew the budget was April or May, or March or April or May, and we weren't gonna do anything prior to the budget. So, the whole thing is to expedite, is to allow Dave to approach council and ask for a 2014 expenditure on that.
Okay, so, and that would cut probably four or five months' time off of it.
Well, actually, you'll be seeing how this would not happen this, 'cause our year ends March 31st. This could just be in your planning commission expenditure that you present to us. But if you don't think we can present something in time for our new budget, which we're gonna be working on...
Again, I'm supposed to get something mid-month.
Once you see what she gives her, I'll present to try to expedite it, if you're gonna get this. I was gonna try to put it on, not this meeting, Monday night, but the next meeting, you know, the second meeting in the month, I was gonna put it on the agenda. So, once you see what Amy says, and I'll try to get an approval to go forward.
Once we have the number from Amy, so we know what we're doing, I can prepare a budget amendment in the motions, or just in case it's approved. But then I'll have a number, where I think you would have a harder time trying to go to council saying, eh, give me approximately.
Well, yeah, I don't wanna do that either.
And then be wrong and say it's too little.
I'll just rewrite, you know, if it's gonna cost us... I just don't see why removing that thousand would be costing, you know, that much. But, could be that I just don't understand.
Well, basically, if you have, you know, generally, when we've done a zoning ordinance change, we've had the planner here. So, that's a $500 figure, just to have the planner here.
Maybe for this, we don't have to have the planner here.
I'm just saying, so, you know, then we're gonna have to do this twice, so, but...
Well, with this thing, then, it's just a matter of changing the number, right?
True.
I don't think it's more than that, I think you're gonna want to rewrite that whole paragraph, 'cause it's got other tabs in there too.
Well, yeah, but if I can...
So, I think with the, as you mentioned, getting the planner, I think it's there, and it's there twice.
And that would be...
They get that feedback, at least reckoning.
And I'm glad to present that.
So, okay, so kind of for everybody that's watching what's going on, we're talking about a zoning ordinance to allow beer and wine in the C1 district, a liquor license in C1 district. In 2002, as they kind of stated earlier, the ordinance was changed. It was in effect January 1st of 2003. Well, this beer and wine thing is nothing that Armada did. It was, we mirrored the state ordinance. So, this is a state requirement. It's not anything that Armada did arbitrarily. It's we adopted state standards. So, but according to the planner, in the state standards, there are allowable deviations. So, one of the deviations, or one of the deviations that I know is, so this, the... Okay, let me back up here. So, and what the, the non-allowance of the beer and wine thing is, when a state passed their new ordinance, they said that no beer or wine or liquor could be sold within a thousand feet of a school or church. Well, everything in the downtown is within a thousand feet of a church. So, that's our dilemma. But again, okay, so now if I can go back to what I stated, there is something in the state ordinance that said if you went to every church or school and got them to sign off, so they actually did an affidavit saying that it was okay for this beer and wine license, or this to move forward. So, but since the state has that caveat in their ordinance, the planner said, we could adjust our ordinance also. So, since the state has a caveat, we can adjust our ordinance. So, that's why we're allowed to do this. Otherwise, we'd be under the state guidelines, not be able to do anything. So, but that's some history of how the ordinance came about. So, now we're looking at redoing this ordinance, and I guess what you said, and I'm sorry to be talking too much, but if you, what you said about separating it, having a 14 budget, and maybe putting it into the 15 budget, you're probably right. If we do this, maybe it could go into the 15 budget and just ask, 'cause it, most of the work is gonna be done in the 14 period. So, I don't, and the bill should come before the budget is up.
I have no problem going there.
Okay.
Not sure if I agree with that, but you're sorry about talking too much. We go through a lot of discussions.
Well, I do like to be thorough, you know.
You are, you are.
All right, so what do we look, get a motion to get, to have Dave go to council requesting?
I think right now, we're gonna wait to see what happens, what Amy...
Well, no, we have, no, we can't do that. We have to do this now, or we have to wait another month.
Okay, well, you can make that motion. I'll put it on the agenda for the second meeting.
Yeah.
Based on...
I'll make sure that I got it.
Based on whatever the dollar value that comes out, so you're asking, you're gonna amend your request to Amy to ask for two, and so just the whole thing?
Two amendments to the zoning ordinance.
But only one of the printing and all that stuff?
Correct, yeah, there'll only be, only one ratification of the actual documented stuff. So, it would just be, I don't know, they, there might, we might have to have it online. There might be, might have to be an electronic copy. I don't know, I don't know what the guidelines are about having, since we're now on internet, I don't know what the guidelines are of, after you amend something, how long you have to put that out. Is there any type of guideline like that? I don't know.
I'm sure there is, but I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I kind of think there is too, but...
Government, so of course there is.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's something Amy will have to tell us, and that will be in, where we reflect her pricing. So, okay, so, if I can kind of just expedite and talk some more. If we could, if we could make, have a motion to approve Dave to talk to council about having a 2014 expenditure on the zoning ordinance, solely on the beer and wine amendment to the ordinance. And I will get pricing for that second meeting and accompany Dave at that meeting. However Becky words that.
Yeah, so moved.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Oh, in favor?
I should abstain.
Yeah.
I think so. I'll abstain on that.
So, I abstain?
Yeah, no, no, he's not a vote on council.
Oh, no, I'm not gonna vote, yeah, okay, yeah, you shouldn't say, yeah, okay, all right. Good for you. Okay, okay. So, did we answer all your questions now?
What section is it though in the book, though? I wanna read over that portion too on the zoning.
A thousand feet.
The thousand foot, what's that actually stated at?
6.507.
6.057.
507.
Is that for the beer or for liquor?
It's all.
It's all together. Hang on, Mike, I'll just take your time.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, any more public comments before we move on? All right. So, how do you feel? So, this is unusual, but...
I feel we're never gonna get it, that's how I feel.
You know what the problem is? We've been coming here, we've been waiting three months already, and nobody been doing nothing about it.
That's incorrect, sir.
We have, we do have... Tonight that happened, that's how we speak. But we've got three months, nobody giving us an answer, nobody.
And the answer can't happen?
Everything, no, 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 we walk around.
No, if you've been listening...
We walk around with the time.
Well...
Somebody, yeah, he doesn't do his job, I don't know who that is.
Sir, yeah, I've been in business for 40 years, and I've been...
Sure right.
In business, you can do things, in a drop of a hat, you can change directions, you can do anything you want.
I understand that, I will do.
And government does not work that way. And, you know, right in the beginning, we said it was gonna take a long time to do this. Tonight, I went overboard to explain the procedure and how things were gonna be done. And it wasn't until tonight that anybody had said something about amending the budget. So, I asked if I could change the budget, and I was told no. So, we have been working on this, and on your end, I can totally understand that it sounds like we're not doing anything, but our hands are tied on how much we can do. It's kind of like you not being able to sell beer and wine, even though you already do it. And we have kind of the same thing. We have somebody telling us that we can't do this, even though we'd like to.
They try to work together, I know, they go on, you know, let's work together. You know, it's rough, it's rough the way we are right now, it's rough.
Please.
I don't wanna push, you know.
Okay.
I go on, you know.
Okay, well, hopefully you see that we're trying to do something and...
Please.
Okay, well, it's, we can't do any more than what we're doing. Okay, so, chair report, so, we missed, I missed something in my chair report at the last meeting. And in this chair report, I'm gonna defer to our elected secretary. So, Christie and I went to a seminar.
I booked a very beautiful building for a seminar, actually, on pretty much what we're talking about tonight. It was all on planning and changing, and the meeting was, for me, a little confusing, because I'm new to all of this, I'm still trying to learn it, but I thought it was very informative. And hopefully it can be used when we're changing ordinances and making the master plan, which I guess I'm gonna be a part of now. But it was a very, very, very good meeting that we had, very informative.
Well, great.
What was the seminar title?
It was put out by Roe, and they're free seminars. So, we do have Roe now as a planner again, or not a planner, but an engineer.
Yes.
So, not crazy.
We're dying being anyhow.
I'm not crazy about them, but they do host a nice, a nice free series. So, this is the second time I went, and like Christie said, it's an awesome building.
It is, it was beautiful.
Take your car.
Didn't have it. Oh, the car, oh, the village car?
The old police car.
No.
You can do that.
The police car?
It is.
Yeah, I only wanted to like it for the life of it.
I pull it up partners, I'm the only guy to pull it in those meetings with the old Armada police car.
So, anyway, if those meetings come around, those seminars...
Sorry, Mike, sorry, intro, sorry.
It's worthwhile to go, even if you just lean a little bit. I mean, if you're paying for the meeting and you get 10% out of the meeting, it's not really worth it. But if you're really just spending your time to go for a free meeting, and you get 10%, it was well worth it.
Good cookies.
Yeah. So, anyway, okay, so, other than that, I did talk to, so rather than the ESO thing being in the design, display, displayed mix coming tonight, so, they were fully intent on coming, and Mr. ESO paid the special proof of land use fee. But it wasn't until just a couple of weeks ago that I found out that the letter of intent never came. So, then that's when I said, you know, we needed the letter of intent, and they couldn't produce it fast enough. So, that's why we're off till next week. So, other than that, that's all I got to say.
Becky, can I ask just one question here? That, you know, in regards to this, even though I don't get into it too much, on that ESO thing, that building, that space that's right behind the building, is that part of that parking lot?
Wait a minute, the building right behind the building?
Yeah, no, the vacant area right behind the building.
Okay.
That runs into, yeah, it runs into the alley. You got the alley, you know, runs this way. Then the building is over here, and then behind it, there's a pretty wide, open area.
Well, okay, so, where the ESO building is, the ESO property is...
Yeah, it's behind that where those doors are?
He, Mr. ESO owns from his building to the API building.
Okay.
And he owns south to the back of Mr. Paterak's building, and backs up on some residential property.
Okay, so that, that open area to the east of the building is not part of that parking lot, that public?
Only the pavement.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. So that's really the area that he has to maneuver a truck in there.
And then how do you get the truck there?
Yeah, it's on the alley.
You can't.
Why?
How are you gonna, how are you gonna maneuver the truck in there?
Well, I'd have to go kind of like pass and then back in, I'd have to.
But he doesn't own the property, he owns the, the stuff on, to the, but he, I don't think he owns everything to the alley.
He doesn't own everything to there?
I don't think so, because the, the Bell Building is there, and so there's, the Auto Parts has a building there too. So who owns that alley? I'm not, you know, if Mr. Ezo owns it all, all the way to the asphalt of the alley, I don't know, I don't think he does.
No, there's small easements on the south side of the, of the alley.
Mm-hmm.
There's little tiny parcels that belong to the Main Street business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Remember, Simpson had a garage.
Well, and that's it, and that's now the, that's now the Auto Parts. So then, so the Auto Parts owns part of that, so, so also does the Bell Building.
Well, so that's not public then.
No, no, no. So he really can't, the only way, he really can't get to that back, other than he goes across somebody else's property or the village's property.
Yeah, the parking lot.
The parking lot.
Yeah.
So I did happen to, since you brought it up, I did happen to talk to the DPW supervisor, and ask him what the thickness of the asphalt was. He kind of thought it was only a couple inches thick.
Yeah, it's not.
It's what?
It's not majorly thick.
Yes, and that's what he said, and I said, okay, well, it supports truck traffic. He said, no, he said, I, it won't recommend.
Doesn't have, we, we have some trucks go through there, and I don't know.
True, but now you're.
Down the alley anyway.
Yeah, the beer truck, that's what I meant, the alley.
Yeah, but we're not talking about the alley.
You're talking about the parking lot?
Correct.
Yeah, south of API.
Okay.
Yeah.
Between API and John's buildings.
And does Mark still have a business in the back, back there, rented out? Didn't he have somebody, a welding company or a muster company or something?
Oh, that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
So that's, so that's gone, that's empty now?
Oh, yeah, that's, and that was, that was gone before.
Before burned, was it?
Uh, burned within there.
Okay.
Well, I wouldn't wanna be parking in, on a regular basis in that parking lot with humongous trucks going through.
Right, that was my point, I didn't know if that was already utilized for this other business that he had in there.
Well, that's really not a, he's gonna have to do off-hour gammas. I wouldn't think we want going through that parking lot, a semi, full-length trailer there, that's.
Well.
When you visualize it all being full on both sides.
Well.
And the door is not directly behind that.
No.
The door is off to one side, so you had to back in, angle the back of the truck around.
After-hours deliveries.
Yeah. But even with after-hours delivery, the, the blacktop isn't built to support that kind of weight.
Well, and if you backed up to the door, that means you had to pull in into the park property and back across Church Street, back all the way through the parking area to get to the back of the building.
I know, that's what's scary, you know, if you're parking that lot, and you got some semi trying to pull that through, you know, once a week or once every two weeks or whatever it is, you know.
It was, it was an L-roll truck, right, is that was what he was after, was it?
L-roll and either roadway or somebody like that.
Well, he's got doors, big doors on the front though, on Fulton, right?
Correct, but there's not enough room to get a semi in there either.
Oh, isn't there?
One car.
'Cause I'm 70 foot off the road, and good drivers can make it into my building without going out onto the road. Good drivers.
That was built to store tires and oil and stuff.
Yeah.
So I did talk to somebody whose dad was involved in, majorly involved in Armada Oil and Gas. So my conception was that the Armada Oil and Gas building, so Mark Ezo building that has been coming up for rent throughout the years, was built as a truck maintenance garage, but that's incorrect.
Oh, yeah?
It was never a maintenance garage.
No, no, for tires, would you talk to Mr. Townsend's, maybe?
Well, actually, I was talking to Roger Townsend.
That's Roger.
Yeah, so, so what was his dad's name? John?
John.
Yeah, so John was, was, was a big wig in the Armada. So, and Roger told me that that building was never used for maintenance. The only thing they did is, as Dave indicated, changed tires, and they did oil changes. That was it, that's it, that's all they ever did.
I mean, they stored tires in there, and.
Everything else they farmed out.
It's an odd location, I mean.
So for you newbies, here's, here's the old days of that building.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's it, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, my God. Yeah, it's, it's an odd building where it sits. 'Cause it looks like a light industrial building, that's what it looks like, you know? But there's no room to do any light industrial in here, you know, so I, I don't know.
It was the time to do it.
Well, that's back in the day, huh?
Mm-hmm.
No, that's not me standing up in front.
Hey, can I see that?
No, wait a minute. So this isn't that building, is it? Isn't that, I don't think so, I think this is where Moss was.
No.
No, no, no.
Moss was, was down Fulton.
I believe this was about where the marathon is, at one time, I think. No, no, this could be on Fulton.
No, you're talking about the, what was the red horse?
Oh, it, it used to be a mobile there.
Yeah, had the red horse.
Yeah.
Yeah. For standard.
No, I think.
Standard oil.
You're right.
That's it.
I think this is Fulton there.
Fulton was in the Bible.
See, this, this was these, well, I think the highway's more out here. See, here's the, here's the church that burned down, that's why Church Street, that church of it, 'cause it burned down. But that's why, that's the church back there.
Church Street.
Incidentally, these weren't here when I was young either. So I know they weren't here when you were young, but that mobile station, it wasn't open, but it was there.
Moss was by the tree.
Yeah, Moss was over there.
Yeah, church.
Can you make me copy this?
Oh, we had a boat go in here one time, and I thought that was, that was.
What?
I checked with Dorothy House and see whether I remember the building.
Yeah, it has, Richard or Dorothy might know that one right there.
Can I remember that, when the building was there?
Was there anything on the back?
Yeah, which way?
Yeah.
Some off-brand.
Such a good thing. Yeah, that's not that old.
Space, you don't, you can't see in the corners.
No, this is definitely the building on Fulton.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is. Oh, shoot. I think we're done, though we're not.
Yeah, we're not done yet.
We gotta do the DDA.
Yeah, okay.
Hopefully, we can do that quick.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, okay, we gotta close the, the planning commission.
No.
Oh, that's right, okay, we don't have to close planning commission, we just go to the DDA.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, excuse me, we're opening the DDA meeting, I think we have to open it though, don't we? Or do we?
You didn't say you have to open it.
Okay, all right, okay, so, DDA business, DDA officers.
What ones do we need? Treasurer?
We need a.
Treasurer.
You need them all, you need the chair, the vice chair, the secretary.
Yeah, secretary and a treasurer.
Well, we just ran along last time, I think, with the same as council. There is permission, planning commission. But you have to do the same thing, nominate, blah, blah, blah.
I, I move to make Ben the likely chairman of the DDA.
All in favor? Let's kind of hope that somebody else did.
Aye.
All in favor? All most, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Okay, vice chair.
I nominate Chris.
You can nominate.
It's not nomination?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I nominate Chris for vice chair of DDA.
Second. Dave?
Yes, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we have treasurer.
Secretary.
Secretary, yeah, secretary would be next, right?
I nominate Christie for secretary of the DDA.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have treasurer, Mr. Smith was.
Treasurer liaison, by statute, I am a treasurer.
Treasurer liaison.
Treasurer liaison.
Okay. So nomination?
They all for treasurer liaison for the DDA.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I second that though.
Well, who nominated them?
I did.
Okay, Christie, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, DDA budget. So.
Pretty impressive numbers, yeah?
Yeah. Okay, the expenditure, if I got this correct, is for, okay.
Thirty thousand four hundred thirty-two.
Here's the expenditure.
All right, so. This is the same timeframe, with, how come the numbers are different?
No, this is what is actual, this is what is proposed.
Okay.
Sixteen, this is actual this year.
So why are we proposing more than?
But we have no gift capture this year, eh?
I'm not putting down any gift capture, 'cause I won't know that until after the March 4 review. You may see a little bit this year, but.
Like last year, you got twenty-nine hundred thirteen.
Okay, this is sixteen, okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, last year was April closing from MISD.
Okay, so our expenditures are gonna be thirty thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty cents for the year of, April 15 to, uh.
March.
April, basically, April 16. So we're transferring money from the.
From construction account.
The construction account into the bank account in the amount of.
Thirty thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah, so there is some money in the account currently, and then the estimated tax capture. So when we're all done with this, we're going to have forty-one thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Say, isn't that a dollar off, Joe?
In the construction account, the leftover, and there will be.
They salvaged that in the, in the, when you're bringing over the balances over here.
Yeah.
They salvaged around me then.
Okay, yeah.
So it makes it a dollar off.
And then there's, uh, four thousand sixty-three dollars and seventeen cents that's gonna be left in the actual bank account.
In the general fund, yeah.
In the general fund bank account.
Is that plus whatever the capture is?
That would be plus any capture that you would get, so, and you won't have to do a budget amendment for a revenue, so if you get captured, bonus.
And you don't even know what the capture is for this year, yeah?
No, I won't know that till after March 4 review.
So with the, the amount spent is gonna be, remain the same no matter?
The amount spent for that bond payment will be exactly that, thirty thousand four hundred thirty.
Pretty soon, we'll have to make up the difference.
So we don't know exactly what we have in the account until after the fact, but over.
At the end of the year, you may have some additional, you will not be less.
Correct, okay. Well, how about we, and what we do with this is we prepare this, we prepare to send this to council. Council then accepts the, or rejects the budget. If they reject the budget, then it comes back to us, and we have to re-repair, re-reprepare. But if they accept it, then it comes back to us to adopt. So this is three meetings to do this budget. So that's how government moves, that's why the beer and wine thing isn't just a.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, like somebody would like to see it.
I would see no reason why the council won't accept it, because there's nothing you can change.
Right.
You have no expenditures other than payment of our bond.
And that's exactly what DDA, what happened with the DDA going to the planning commission, because that's already what we're doing, is just paying bills.
Passing it through.
Without waste. Okay, so motion to approve this to preparation to send to council.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay. Now, just before the adjournment, I'd like to say something. I wasn't the only one to extend the meeting this evening.
You were right.
Okay, so motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.